All right.
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse? Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Let the record show that all board members, with the exception of Dr. Woodhouse, are present this evening. We now move on to the adoption of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Yes, Ms. Cherry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to add a recognition section to the agenda this evening as section number two, to address an employee recognition and renumber the remaining agenda sections accordingly.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to modify the agenda this evening to add a recognition section as section two for an employee recognition. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. The motion carries. So we now move on to recognitions. And it is my pleasure to announce that we are highlighting a very special employee this evening, the school board clerk. The V S B A, which is the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors, has designated the third week in February as V S B A School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And so we wanted to recognize our clerk, Ms. Bowers. Now, the first thing that we're going to do is give her a proclamation and read a proclamation. So I'm gonna do that first. And I believe Dr. Smith has delivered that proclamation as I speak. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities. And whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and dispersments, and a record of all official acts. And whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of her slash his county or city as may be required by the school board. And whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and media on behalf of the school board and the superintendent. And whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings. And whereas the school board clerk clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve their highest potential. And whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents. The V S B A Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the Hampton School Board joins the V S B A in recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks. Now therefore, be it resolved that at its meeting on the seventeenth day of February, the Hampton School Board also recognized the third week of February as School Board Appreciation Week. And that is signed by the chair and the vice chair of the Hampton City School Board. And Ms. Bowers is holding that up right now. The other thing that we would like to do is give Ms. Bowers a certificate of recognition that reads, "This certificate is proudly presented to Carolyn Bowers in appreciation for, of your dedication and service to the Hampton School Board as the School Board Clerk." It's signed by the superintendent and the chair. And then the final thing, well, we just gave her a card of appreciation from all of us, just to say thank you. So I just want to say, Ms. Bowers does so many things for us. She is historian, she's travel agent, she's records keeper, and the list just goes on and on. And she works really hard to make us look like we all know what we're doing all the time. And she does an excellent job. She's been doing it for years. And we could not do this without her. So thank you very much, Ms. Bowers. We really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I hope we surprised you a little bit.
You did. You did.
Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cherry.
Yes, if I could just say something very quickly. I have had the honor, and it was an honor, to work with Ms. Bowers for seventeen years. And I can tell you, you're talking about a jack-of-all-trades. You would be shocked at how many times she's kept us as a board, it's boards, out of trouble. Because she always looks ahead to see what's going on, and she makes sure all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. And as school board clerk, I can tell you, having traveled for V S B A and N S B A and the Public Relations Association, there are so many school boards whose clerks have assistants. We don't have that with Ms. Bowers. Actually, Ms. Bowers has two jobs. Because she's P R assistant and school board clerk. So she is phenomenal. And if we ever get back to traveling, and she takes that trip again to Alaska and decides not to come back, we're in a world of trouble when it comes to finding somebody to replace her. So I just wanted to say, we appreciate you so much, Carolyn. I know I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Okay, moving on to now, section three of our meeting, which is the consent agenda, which consists of item 3.01 Personnel Report Number 21-03, item 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of February 3, 2021, and item 3.03 Certification of the Closed Session of February 3, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion for Ms. Cherry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. The motion carries. We now move to section four of our meeting, which is the Superintendent and Staff Reports. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you so much, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. As you will recall, that during the school board meeting of October the seventh, we provided the board with an overview of our mitigation plan. And most recently, at the January twentieth and February third school board meetings, we really tried to provide the board with some context as it relates to the framework of our teaching and learning, especially as to how it might work in an expanded hybrid in-person model. And so this evening, we will continue that conversation as relates to other important aspects of our framework for safely expanding our return-to-school hybrid in-person model. Also, within the context of this evening's presentation, we'll talk about a timeline, proposed timeline for expanding our return-to-school hybrid in-person model. Nurse Gill will certainly provide an update relative to the vaccination clinic, clinic. And then we'll also talk about the most recent guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, C D C, for safely opening of schools and where we reside as a school division and our alignment with that particular guidance. And so we'll begin this evening with, I think, Dr. Cajano. We'll start the presentation. But then he will be joined by Dr. Owens and who serves as our Executive Director for Elementary Education in terms of school leadership, and Dr. Haynes, who serves as the Executive Director for School Leadership at the secondary level. And then certainly, Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources, and Nurse Gill, our Director for Health Services. And so we'll start in that order and ask Dr. Cajano if he'll kick it off in terms of the return-to-school plan, the updates in that particular order. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, members of the board, and those in the community who are in the viewing audience this evening. It is a pleasure for our team to be with you tonight. We plan to, as Dr. Smith said, taking a look at the agenda, really providing an update regarding the division's return-to-school planning efforts. And so as Dr. Smith went through the agenda here, we'll stick to that. And at the end, we'll also share just a few resources for those perhaps who haven't tuned in lately or taken a look at some of the board presentations posted on Board Docs. And that would be some parent and guardian resources. Then, of course, members of the team will be more than happy to entertain any questions that board members will have following the presentation. So as the board is well aware, for quite some time now, we have been, as a division, following, adhering, referencing those indicators for dynamic school decision-making from the C D C that were released in September. And so as the board is also aware, February twelfth, the most recent guidance came out from the C D C, their operational strategy for K through twelve schools, this phased mitigation approach. And as it states there, the quote there is taken from the first page of this thirty-three-page document. And for those at home who are reviewing, if you have a access to this PowerPoint, and again, it's been posted on Board Docs, either one of these URLs on this screen here are hyperlinked. So for example, this here will take you to that thirty-three-page document or the citation down below. And so in a nutshell, this quote does a good job of somewhat summarizing the purpose here. And so the strategy does present the pathway, and the strategy in totality presents a pathway to reopen schools and help them remain open through consistent use of mitigation strategies. And particularly, two of the key five that they're recommending, and we'll highlight those throughout this presentation, that being one, especially universal and correct use of masks, as well as physical distancing. In reference to this particular quote from the C D C, also in the guidance document, which speaks to decision-making for return to in-person learning. And as the board is aware, we've continued to examine really three specific areas. Again, C D C framework and guidance documents has been at the top. H C S key mitigation strategies, of which we have six, as well as operational capacity. So this evening, the team will share updates for each of these three areas. Additionally, we'll highlight some of that new guidance coming out from C D C on February twelfth, while identifying, again, our strengths, possible weaknesses, and mitigation strategies for each of the five C D C key mitigation strategies. For example, the one in reference to physical distancing, appropriate physical distancing. You'll see this evening that one of our identified potential weaknesses is that of, at the secondary level, when we look at P E classes and elective classes. And so we'll talk about some of the mitigation strategies there. There are five key mitigation strategies from the C D C. I highlighted the first two already. A universal and correct use of masks, physical distancing at least six feet, maximize to the greatest extent possible. In some cases, just because of family preference survey data, which we'll highlight again this evening, we'll be able to move well beyond six feet. In some cases, in some of our middle school rooms, for example, probably the eight to ten feet. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette, a key strategy, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine, and of course, working collaboratively with the health department when it comes to contact tracing. This particular quote here in the C D C document, obviously, as the pandemic has moved along, more and more evidence, and the thirty-three-page document does cite a number of studies, including one citation here, that evidence does suggest that many K twelve schools that have strictly implemented these mitigation strategies have been able to remain safely open for in-person instruction. And we see that even here in our own region. We've been in conversation with those, those school divisions locally, for example, who've had their doors open in the surrounding region. Alawite is a great example, even the last contact made this morning. Whereas if you think about their approach, they began school in-person learning the day after Labor Day. And as of this morning, not one case of student-to-student transmission of COVID- nineteen. And they have had one case of staff-to-staff. So when you speak with Alawite, when you reference and surrounding divisions, and when you reference that document, what you hear from the local divisions in our conversations, and what you hear from the C D C, and this is the same slide previously shared, but duplicated with graded, grade-out, three through five. And the divisions will tell you that the two big strategies are the two that the C D C will say are essential. And that is universal and correct use of masks, and again, physical distancing. So those two, we have been paying a lot of attention to in our planning efforts throughout. You'll recognize five of the six strategies from the C D C on our graphic here, which we've been sharing with the board for the last couple of meetings. The sixth one, of course, for us, the bottom right-hand corner, that of air purifier. So the use of CARES funds, for those who are tuning in for the first time, the use of CARES funds to purchase an air purifier for each one of our teachers' classrooms in other key locations around school building and offices as well. Dr. Smith mentioned when he introduced this presentation that back in October, we did provide the board with a detailed presentation on a lot of the P P E that had been purchased and shared some of the the detailed mitigation strategies. So I do want to highlight in just, just a few of the slides in that presentation. So I'm going to click on this link here. So for those who are viewing, it takes you to this presentation and just highlights several, several slides. So I want to bring up this slide here first. So some critical steps that we've taken in preparation for modified, modified in-person learning. And we have, and these are posted, Kelly Groll's office through Public Relations and Marketing has posted these on our website. We've provided training to staff on these. But that's just to give you some of the idea and areas where we've, we've developed protocols and sets of expectations in planning for an expansion of return to modified in-person learning. Another one here, protocols and measures in place. All staff are required to wear masks. All staff have received at least one face covering and a face shield. And all students will be receiving one for those who would be coming to in-person learning with their face covering, with their, their school logo. Contact tracing efforts. Nurse Gill has been leading that, working with Hurst's team of nurses, staff of nurses. Not only have nurses been trained, but school administrators have been trained. They've taken that training, kind of trained the trainer model, and brought that back to the schools. We've also in-house technology-developed our own database that we're able to track. And you see some of the data points that we have available to us in that database there. This slide here, again, a lot of the CARES Act funds used to beef up as far as cleaning and supplies to include custodial training. So we've upgraded the disinfectant, hospital-grade disinfectant. We have some fancy machines now that, that are able to hit wide ranges of areas in a very timely manner. Those electrostatic disinfecting machines, chemical atomizers. And I mentioned the, the training already. And of course, P P E, and we've mentioned some of this already, face coverings, surplus supplies of face coverings for bus drivers, for when students board the bus without a mask perhaps, or and/or classroom teachers along those same lines of surplus. And you see some of the other, other mitigation strategies, such as hand sanitizing stations and disinfecting supplies. So again, that particular presentation goes in-depth in the area of mitigation strategies. Taking a look at some of the health data which we continue to monitor, we've got several slides for you here. This one was as of ten a.m. this morning. And so we still do remain in the highest risk category for both the number of new cases per one hundred thousand persons in the last fourteen days, as well as the percentage of R T, P C R tests that are positive during the last fourteen days. Again, our self-assessment with mitigation strategies, we continue to rate ourselves in the lower to lowest risk. Another way, just to graphically represent, depict, if you think back to what we had heard from the experts, right? Come the, the winter holidays that we would see a spike. And certainly, our trend is representative of those around the country. You see here, this timeline represents from January first through this morning. And so you see where we reached that peak and have begun to decline. The first slide was as of ten a.m. This next slide is as of five p.m. So hot off the presses. This comes to us on a weekly basis from the Hampton and Peninsula Health Districts, the Emergency Preparedness and Response Program Office here. So here, just depicting and highlighting, of course, on the right there and looking at the line graph here, that cases have been decreasing for twenty-six days, and again, trending in the right direction. And from a label standpoint, they are labeled by the health district as decreasing. And that positivity rate decreasing for the last fourteen days also considered, again, label of decreasing. So again, seeing data trend in the right direction. So as we, as we looked, as Dr. Smith mentioned, to expand the grade levels participating and having the opportunity to participate in modified in-person instruction, the, the board did task the superintendent with the creation of a set of expectations for, for staff and students. And so we just wanted to highlight that, particularly for the viewing members who hadn't seen that. We also know we've administered that survey several times to parents. And if there are parents who are viewing this evening, who perhaps made a switch as far as preference from virtual to in-person, we just wanted to remind folks that they would need to fill out this student-parent-guardian expectations agreement form. And so this is hyperlinked here. If I click on this document, it launches that form. This, this link here launches how to complete that agreement online through the parent portal access, if you would prefer to do so electronically. So you can do that electronically or send it to your, into your child's school. Families of in-person learners also are required, this is a part of that agreement, that prior to coming to school, prior to boarding the bus for in-person learners, we ask that an adult at home, you know, walks, walks the child through and checks that student health assessment questionnaire. So it's just another layer of protection that we're all doing our due diligence as a community and that we're looking for signs of, perhaps, perhaps, for example, of a fever. So it's just a reminder, before we leave for the day to begin learning, that, 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 that we all heed information on the agreement and, and are mindful and do our, our part as responsible citizens. All three links above are located under the quick links on the Return to School Plan website. And so we'll pull that up at the very end of this presentation. And you'll see the screenshot where the quick links are located. But so it's online, of course, if you'd like to call your child's school, they can also assist with that program. This particular link here takes you to the staff agreements page as well. And so you'll see those staff members are working with us, of course. The expectation is that they've read and understood and have signed off on that agreement prior to in-person learning taking place. Again, just to recap, forty-two percent of our families at this point in time, as of January twentieth, do desire to remain in in-person learning. So one of the things that's done for us as a division from a planning standpoint has been, for example, when you hear Dr. Haynes speak to this tonight, we've been able to increase the number of days in our in-person learning model that students can engage in in-person learning with teachers as a result of lower ratios. So rather than having to go two days a week, we can go four. The other piece is, is that we've broken out this information by school. Principals have been asked through executive directors to break this out by teacher. So from a planning standpoint, we're very confident that physical distancing, again, being a top key mitigation strategy, that we will be able to, to meet that expectation. As far as, as dates, the first column there, Return to Modified in-Person Instruction, the first column, February twenty-second. The board will recall on February first, at the, so the beginning of this month, that we shared with staff members that we would be returning to modified in-person learning for grades pre-K, kindergarten, as well as select students with disabilities in a self-contained setting. As a reminder, that was our, our kind of first phase, our, our first stage, excuse me, first stage of returning in-person learners in this Phase Two of our return-to-school plan. So we, we have been on, out on virtual for all students to include these particular students. However, we will pick up, the, the proposal is to pick up back on February twenty-second for returning to modified in-person learning. Then you look at March eighth and March fifteenth, there is some method to our madness there, a bit of being strategic for a couple of reasons. So when you look at elementary schools on March eighth, we would look to expand grades one, two, and three. And then on March fifteenth, a week later, these are both Mondays, the eighth and the fifteenth, a week later, bring back four and five. And so, of course, what that does was, is gives us a little bit of time to, you know, our cleaning protocols adequate cafeteria, arrival dismissal procedures, are they working prior to expanding, again, more grade levels to come in? Again, keep in mind that we're, we're talking about roughly at the most fifty percent of a typical student population back in school at that time. And at the elementary level, really, because of the schedule Dr. Owens will share, we're looking at almost a quarter capacity, so twenty-five percent on a given day at the elementary level. Grades six and nine there, again, strategically, the principals' feedback and teachers as well suggested that in those particular grades where you've got students transitioning to a new school, that they have some time to acclimate. Again, also giving middle schools and high schools some time to get those other procedures in place prior to the remaining grade levels, then returning on March the fifteenth. So four, five, seven, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve on, on the fifteenth. The next part of our presentation, I'll talk about pre-K. Dr. Owens then will share information on the instructional model for elementary. And Dr. Haynes will, will wrap up this particular section, looking at grades six through twelve. So, and, and we share this in the presentation on our, just for, for those who would prefer looking at a detailed schedule, and we know that some folks prefer that view, on our return-to-school plan, if I'm a parent of a pre-K student, I can click on that Phase Two and I can find a detailed sample schedule. So we do have that available on the website. But here, here's the way that the pre-K model works. And so at pre-K, we have one set of teachers. And you'll hear Dr. Owens talk about, we have virtual teachers and in-person teachers for grades K through five. For, for grade pre-K, we have one set of teachers. And so I teach, if I have eighteen students in my class, and nine of them are at home and virtually, and then nine of them are in person, I, I, I address both groups of learners. The in-person learners, I'll see on Mondays and Wednesdays on campus. Those will be traditional start and dismissal times. And so that is a traditional school day for those boys and girls on Mondays and Wednesdays. On Fridays, they will zoom in, not only as a, as a smaller group, but the virtual learners will, will join them. So on Mondays and Wednesdays, in a smaller group with a teacher on campus, on Fridays, they join their virtual learners as one larger group, one, one class to, to participate in instruction via Zoom. And that's from twelve to two. That's an abbreviated day on Fridays. We've built in some time for teacher planning on Fridays. And then for virtual learners, Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're engaged with, with their teacher from a period of eight to eleven. And then again, Fridays, eight to ten there. And then that schedule has, has varied sometimes by school, whether it's an elementary school or Moton. And so sometimes they zoom together as a large class, and sometimes they have a, a smaller group session. And then for remediation for some even smaller group instruction, we've set aside Tuesdays and Thursdays from twelve to two, and that is at this time by invite only. But this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Owens.
Any good evening. So the next few slides simply outline the schedules for our in-person and our virtual learners in grades K through five. And for our in-person learners, as Dr. Cajano said, we've split them into two groups. And we did this to make sure that we were able to decrease numbers and to allow for social distancing. So Group One learners would be in-person on Mondays and Wednesdays, with Group Two reporting on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with asynchronous learning taking place on the alternate days. On Fridays, all students would still have instruction with their teachers via Zoom. Our virtual learners would continue to have the same schedule that they've had all along with their meeting with their teachers Monday through Fridays. We have a Group A and a Group P, AM group and a PM group to allow for parent preferences and supporting families. So students would continue to see their teachers from eight until eleven until three on those days, with Fridays being an opportunity for all students to receive instruction. Also allows for remediation and teacher planning. We have parents who may have decided for some reason to move from in-person to virtual or from virtual back to in-person. Then we're asking that they call the school office. The school office will then notify the principal, and the principal will make accommodations if space is available. Our select students with disabilities will continue to be served in their self-contained settings Mondays through Thursdays on half, with a half-day schedule. The in-person learners are teacher-led. The instruction is for the first half of the day, and the virtual learners participate in teacher-led instructions. The instruction is for the first half of the day and the virtual learners participate in teacher-led instructions the second part of the day. Fridays, we continue to use those for recovery services. I will now turn this over to Dr. Haynes, who will go over grade six through 12.
Thank you, Dr. Owens. We will be running a concurrent hybrid model with both sets of learners, virtual and in-person will be engaging. At the same time, our secondary administrators know we will be running a traditional bills bell schedule there in large part because of transportation. So for example, middle school for virtual learners, as it states on the right side there, we do feel that it's difficult, even at the middle school level, to engage six and a half hours per day online. So we have provided training to the middle school teachers already. Curriculum leaders, digital learning specialists, administrators have been briefed in reference to that. So in a given ninety-minute class, the expectation is that you're not online for ninety consecutive minutes. So we're looking for really no more than give or take sixty minutes for a middle school student in a given class. So that could be sixty minutes upfront, direct instruction, what could be split up thirty minutes in the front, direct instruction to the whole class, then bringing in some small group opportunities with in-person learners while virtual learners have independent assignments they're working on or vice versa. So again, our curriculum leaders have been working with our secondary teachers on that at the middle school level. So Fridays will continue to continue to be virtual mediation remediation days by Zoom invite and also including the counseling component. So this is for what we would consider the foreseeable future. So one of the things we have heard from teachers and administrators is that this concurrent hybrid model, it is a bit different and they would appreciate some grace and additional planning time. So Fridays are built into the weekly schedule for grade six to 12 for that reason. One of the reasons is to have some additional time to get used to the model. It could be that at some point during the third quarter or beginning of the fourth quarter that we could possibly and strongly look at transitioning to five days per week. The other beauty of the swivel that we're using at the secondary level, it allows us to significantly increase the time in front of teachers. So like Dr. Cagiano mentioned earlier, most divisions are running a similar model to our pre-K model at the secondary level. They're running an A day and a B day where you see in-person learners on Monday and Wednesday for one group and another on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Fridays off. So you're getting, they're getting just two days of instruction. With our model, we are getting four full days of instruction for in-person and virtual learners. So we are confident that our teachers and our young people will be able to work through this model.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. At this time, Ms. Ruth will provide an update in reference to operational capacity.
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. This slide illustrates the operational capacity as of January 15th. The numbers have not significantly changed in the last month. However, I do expect that there will be a significant decrease in the number of employees who are working remotely as as students return to in-person learning on March 8th and 15th. And while vaccinations are not part of our mitigation strategies, I do think it's important to note that the employees who received their first vaccination through one of the Hampton City Schools clinics prior to February 2nd will have received their second dose prior to March 8th and 15th. And they will also have been through that ten to fourteen day kind of incubation period that they say you need to go through before the you're truly inoculated from the virus. So that certainly for me is good news. Next slide, Dr. Cagiano. For the last week, week and a half, Human Resources has been meeting with all staff administrator or school administrators to review staffing needs and the status of job accommodations. Employees will begin receiving status updates regarding those accommodations as meetings are completed. We'll also be copying the administrators on those emails so that everybody knows exactly what the expectations are for employees in terms of whether or not they will remain virtual or they will be expected to return to the work site. Also, I think it's important to note that we have substitutes in place for all all positions where we are going to need an extra pair of hands for February 22nd. And administrators are busy putting in requests for March 8th and 15th. But I do feel confident that we will be able to staff those as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruth. At this time, we'll turn it over to Nurse Gill, who has an update in reference to our vaccination planning efforts. Nurse Gill.
Yes, we have been busy working with the city to get vaccinations, not only to our staff, but also to employees of the city. And now we're progressing into actually doing vaccinations for the more vulnerable of of people ages seventy and up and and then the nursing homes and other things. So we're we're very active with that. And and again, thank you for allowing that to happen. Our nurses have been very instrumental in in getting people through and and just being there and and providing that comfort of that they are getting their vaccinations and and we are progressing through. Next slide, please. As you have seen this slide, for those that have have seen this review, we have done about, well, we actually probably have done more than probably nineteen hundred now vaccines administered through this whole time. Just various others, sometimes what happens is we'll get some doses left over. So we'll pull in people from our employees that are still on the waiting list. So I can actually say probably we've gotten more than that number of eighteen hundred and seventy-five vaccines. I will say that for those that are wondering whether they're going to be get it, when they're going to be getting their second dose, you will get your second dose definitely. There was a discussion in the beginning that you could have it four days before, four days after. CDC and the Department of Health have said that we need to have it on the date or after the date. And so just anticipate that the clinics will be set up based on that. We now are with the state system of of scheduling those vaccines. So it's a little different. We had control over it in the beginning, but now it goes through the Hampton, the health department as a whole. And so staff members will be receiving emails saying, this is the date that you can a a link for you to schedule your appointment and the times that are available. So it it allows a smooth transition and it also allows for accountability of who are getting the vaccines and is it appropriately being given so that the governor, as well as the President of the United States, for that matter, have, you know, they can see the numbers and can see who's actually getting these. So the transition is is moving along. And we do have our first second dose starting this Friday. We'll have two hundred employees and I just checked to make sure that all of the two hundred had actually scheduled their appointment and we only had three that hadn't. And so hopefully by tomorrow and when we give them a call, just to see what if there was an issue, we'll have all two, all hundred of ours done and then the city has another hundred. So we are progressing and you'll, the staff will get for the next week their their email soon, just on given the dates that we'll have for the following week. We do have to wait for the health department to make those decisions. So it's not something that Hampton City Schools is making a decision on the dates. Next slide.
Thank you, Nurse Gill.
Thank you.
As as Dr. Smith mentioned, one of the things we've done as a team is to take an assess, an assessment of our plan and planning efforts and just how tightly we align with CDC guidance, particularly the new guidance that was released on February 12th. And so as depicted this slide in the next several, one per CDC key mitigation strategy. What did we identify to be our strengths? What are some potential weaknesses? And if so, what are some mitigation factors? So you can see here for this one, correct use of masks, some of the strengths that we've put in place to include protocols developed and shared. Supply on hand, which we which we've talked about already, the cloth masks for student face shields for all staff. And information from surrounding divisions certainly indicates that when students, students will wear those masks properly when instructed to do so. So for this particular key strategy, we did not see any at this time identify any potential weaknesses. For the second one, in reference to physical distancing, at least six feet maximized to the greatest extent possible. As we've shared this evening and shared with the board previously, and Dr. Haynes alluded to, our 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 family preferences do allow us some flexibility there to create learning spaces where physical distancing of at least six feet is possible. And so we've also done our homework, looking at family preferences, analyzing that down to the individual student level. So principals have have done that, not only for core classes, but PE and elective classes as well. And they're still in the midst of doing that. One particular, perhaps, potential weakness, larger student to teacher ratios in select secondary PE and elective classes. I think I mentioned that at the onset. So a mitigation strategy there, our curriculum leaders, Pat Thompson, as well as Dr. Vivian Greasy and her teacher specialist, Mr. Kelly D., put together some guidelines and procedures that have been developed and and shared with those teachers. So the next two slides, twenty-two and twenty-three, speak to those. I won't go over these in detail, but what we've done for you is just to kind of call out, bold and and underline those specific mitigation strategies within the overarching ones that speak to physical distancing here. So you can see some of that in reference to PE and some of the guidance we've already provided to teachers through our curriculum leaders. There for pre-K through 12 PE and then also for band and chorus as well. To include, you know, you see here instrument covers will be provided to each band student. And so that goes on, for example, the end of a French horn. We've also purchased unique face masks that are designed for instrument use or designed for coral use, such as the brackets with extenders. And so again, here we have the obviously a lot of space in in some of our buildings, particularly at the secondary level. So we'll use those larger spaces when needed as well. For the third key mitigation strategy of hand washing and respiratory etiquette, again, we have not identified any potential weaknesses at this time. We've done a lot and through Dr. Bowling's efforts, working closely with custodial crew as well, lots of hand sanitizer dispensers available throughout the school, not only just in classrooms, on the buses as well. A surplus of supplies located in our warehouse, protocols, signage. We mentioned the expectation agreements already to include even desk shields purchased for each student. So as far as respiratory etiquette and hand washing, we believe we're on target. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities. We mentioned some of those machines already that are being used on a nightly basis, even without some students in classes. We talked about the air purifiers, hospital-grade disinfectant being used in all of our schools, ample supply of gloves, spray bottles with disinfectant per classroom. We revamped cleaning protocols, intervals for custodial staff. And of course, as Ms. Ruth mentioned, mentioned, offer that vaccine to all interested employees. So one potential weakness here is individual concerns related to cleaning protocols. And we've seen some of that bubble up, even if we've even seen something on social media. The first question we'll ask a staff member and more than likely a teacher, have you had the chance to communicate with your building principal? Our building principals have a direct line to Dr. Bowling's cell phone and we we have been very responsive. And Dr. Bowing leave 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 no request unchecked. So again, as long as our our teachers are communicating clearly and and frequently with our building administrators, we believe we can mitigate that. Contact tracing, the last one here, key strategy. We've talked about that, the nurses and the training they've received, as well as administrators, principals working with nurses to provide training to school staffs, collaborating, continuing to do so with the health department. That database we mentioned and Ms. Girl's office, that last piece there about the dashboard that we maintain on our return to school website. So while we do a potential weakness, while we do have a very strong contact tracing protocol, you know, securing substitutes, and we've learned this from our neighbors in the region from time to time, may be difficult. So if contact tracing, if if a result is in one grade level, A school, you have a couple of classes perhaps, or a couple of teachers perhaps that need to quarantine, let's say for whatever reason. If if we have too much of that on one day, perhaps it could be an issue with securing ample adequate substitute coverage. So the mitigation strategy, ESS, is the name of the business partner we contract with who provides substitutes. We have been including them in our vaccination clinics, which I know they have been appreciative of. And then lastly, before Mr. Kilgore, we turn it over. Any questions you all may have of of the team? We just wanted to remind the viewing audience that all of this and then some is available on our return to school website. So if you go to a Hampton City Schools website, you'll see this icon. Just click on it, it takes you right to the website. You can click on then the phase two area of the website. You'll see FAQs on there, sample schedules. So just a lot of information for 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 parents. We had our most recent meeting of the return to school, return to school task force this past Friday. They received a kind of a sneak preview and broke out into groups and had the opportunity to provide us some feedback, whether it be on dates or protocols or schedules. And so again, we value their time and and continued feedback and input along the way. So that that does our, does conclude this presentation. Chairman Kilgore, at this time, again, we'd be happy to entertain any questions board members might have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cagiano. Do I have any questions from board members? A lot of good information. Yes, Ms. Banks Gray.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ruth, I know you gave a great slide on some of the vacancies. And I apologize if I did miss this, but as of February the 22nd, how many long-term substitutes are filling teacher vacancies?
I believe that slide shows percentages. I do not know the number off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Okay, real good. Um, let's see. And then also, this could be for Dr. Cagiano. Are we allowing our students to utilize our school libraries? And if so, what are the mitigation strategies for that?
Yes, that is a great question. Yes, students would have access and you know, depending on the level, sometimes at the elementary level where you have have classes. I know Kate Maxlow, who oversees that particular department, has been communicating with staff in reference to protocol. So for example, rather than students going into the library in cases at the elementary level, it could be kind of books on a cart and delivered to classroom. And they're working through hands-on books and cleaning protocols. What I can do is I can share with Dr. Smith what that what that document looks like and and perhaps provide it through the weekly staff notice update to the board.
Okay, real good. Also, Dr. Haynes alluded to the new swivel devices that are going to be installed. I was wondering if they're already been installed in the schools? And if so, are all school levels going to receive those?
Yes, very good question. In fact, we were on the call today with the trainers from Swivel, talking about elementary and and how we structured behind the scenes and teachers accessing one another's videos or platform to sharing. So yeah, so just to recap, as Dr. Haynes mentioned, in six through 12, every six, every classroom teacher in six through 12 will have access to a swivel. The overwhelming majority of those in those grade levels have already been delivered. As Dr. Haynes mentioned, we're also looking to show a little bit of grace. So we know that that particular piece of technology is a little more involved and does a lot more than some others. And so for those teachers in six through 12, they have an option. If they would first prefer when in-person learning returns and this concurrent hybrid model begins, if they would prefer a wide-angle, high-resolution webcam, we will set them up with that. Or if they want to move right on to the swivel. So we've already had a number of trainings. In fact, Dr. Bird Wright engaged math instructional leaders today, this afternoon in grades six through 12. And so again, what we're trying to do is is work through a lot of teachers who are on the ground in schools and and make them, you know, comfortable, competent, comfortable, competent, so that they are go-to experts within their building. We have seven digital learning specialists. We've offered a variety of training opportunities, but of course, only seven of them. So a lot of these teachers are very excited and they'll, they will play a role in expanding that to others. So that's six through 12 and then two through five, that order will not come in into early April. And so while while teachers will use them, as Dr. Owens explained, at the elementary level, the model is a little bit different. And so if we have situations where parents request and there is space to provide a kid who, for example, a student who is in an in-person classroom, but for whatever reason wants to go virtual in grades two through five, rather than having to change to another teacher, we can provide that particular teacher a swivel device earlier than April. And so that that student at home could still maintain that same teacher and and log in and participate in learning that way. So does that answer your question?
That does. Thank you so much. And just a quick comment, thank you so much. I did have a concern, but I do appreciate you updating the new release CDC guidelines as of twelve, what was that? February the 12th. So I do appreciate you incorporating that into the presentation. I do greatly appreciate your, appreciate the the beautiful presentation that you guys gave us this evening to protect our students and our families for Hampton City Schools. So I do appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Banks Gray.
That was one of the areas, I'll just say, Mr. Chairman, for the new guidance from CDC. We thought that it would be most appropriate with the board to just say, here's the new guidance. And this is where we think we currently stand with this new guidance. And in cases where we had a potential weakness, we said, as a team, let's identify it as a potential weakness. And then we can look at whether or not we have strategies in place or if we need to put strategies in place because we have that potential weakness. And so to really do a crosswalk between, here's the current reality, this is And so to really do a crosswalk between, here's the current reality, this is what we had with CDC. And this is the new, the new CDC guidance that we have. And so given the new CDC guidance, where do we stand and what do we need to do to mitigate any of those potential weaknesses? So.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Banks Gray. Mr. Samuels, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. I just want to extend my appreciation to Dr. Cagiano and his team with this presentation, especially capturing and ensuring that we had our stakeholders involved in this meeting to include several teachers, administrative staff and, and, and DLT members on that return to school stakeholder meeting. I think that was a great plan because you know, everyone is involved. And so I just want to say kudos on that. And also back in November, and this is also kudos to the team, also back in November, we made a notification to staff that we would provide them at least two weeks' notice when we are transitioning to our return to person learning. And I'm so glad that this was afforded to them also. So in case if this comes up again, that, you know, all of the questions and concerns that were brought to the board back in November were adequately addressed and, and actions were taken. So once again, thank you so much. But my question, Dr. Cagiano, before you chime in, relates to the virtual to in-person learning. And I know you and I had an in-depth conversation with that and about, so if a student is currently doing virtual learning and they choose to go to in-person learning, they may not have the same teacher. But I'm glad that you also expounded on that, that potentially we could utilize that swivel technology that we have. So could you talk some more about that, Dr. Cagiano?
Yes, Mr. Samuels, thank you for your comments and I will, we'll kind of take that by level. So when you listen to Dr. Haynes and his comments, six through 12, one of the things he's working through at this time with building administrators and building administrators having conversations with teachers is that what does that look like at the high school level? So do we have a student who designates themselves as an in-person learner, but Sunday evening emails their teacher and says, hey, I'm going to be virtual Monday. So they're going to have the same teacher at the secondary level because of the model we have in place. So they're working through what does that look like at our school right now? The, the big piece is because principals at the secondary level know the class to size ratios, it's not going to be as much an issue if I want to go in-person to virtual. But if I want to go virtual to in-person, can we still maintain adequate physical distancing? So that's six, six through 12. At the elementary level and two through five, if I start in-person and I want to go virtual, that swivel is going to allow me the opportunity to maintain that, that same teacher. We're also saying, and, and Dr. Owens has been in conversations with principals about this, we're not saying a second grader in this scenario would be online for six and a half hours either. They could still maintain their teacher, but they would work with their teacher on when their teacher wanted them to log on. However, if I'm a second grader through fifth grader and I want to move from in-person, I'm sorry, from virtual, I'm a virtual learner now, that was my family preference and I want to go in-person, more than likely, we'll be able to accommodate that request. However, and we've been sharing this caveat with parents all along, principals have been communicating with parents, is that in that particular situation, more than likely, you're going to have, you will be assigned another teacher. And so, and that's really applicable for grades K through five in that case. So if you're wanting to look to move from virtual to in-person, because of the two sets of teachers we have, you would more than likely have a new teacher assigned at that point. So a very good question and thank you for your, your comments for the team.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Any other board members have questions? Yes, Dr. Mason.
And not necessarily a question, just a comment. Thank you, Dr. Cagiano, Dr. Smith and DLT and everyone who participated. As we talked before, this is an excellent plan. The plan has always been really good in terms of what we do here in Hampton City Schools as compared to what I've seen throughout the Commonwealth. My biggest thing is, once again, we still don't know the, the certainty of, of this virus in and of itself. And I would just say, as we look at the plan and we look at what we're doing, make sure that we are being very transparent in putting out the number of cases and the mitigations that we are going up against so that the community can make very informed decisions about sending their kids back to school in the building. Because we may find that we are able to mitigate against some of these, you know, against this virus very well. And so we may be able to bring back more kids into the building. But then also the flip side is that if we find that we can't, then we may want to double back to keep everyone safe. Because the ultimate goal is to make sure that we are keeping our kids safe, we are keeping our community safe, we're keeping our teachers safe. And, and to the parents out there that are listening, as we bring our kids back into these buildings, I ask that you follow these CDC guidelines with the masks and the social distancing and stop taking your kids to a number of different places because you're exposing them. And as you expose them to, to this virus, you're also exposing other kids and teachers in the buildings. And so we want to get these kids back in school, you know, so that we can provide the quality instruction that they need. But we need everyone in, in the community. This is not just a Hampton City Schools challenge. This is a Hampton community challenge. And so we need everyone to work with us to keep our kids and, and our, and our school personnel safe as we move forward with our return to learn plan. So thank you. That's all I wanted to, to say.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just wanted to say, as usual, when it comes to plans and moving forward with different options of different decisions, Hampton City Schools is leaps and bounds beyond others. And that's because of the tedious work that has been done months and months and months in preparation for this by the entire team. One of the things that I'm pleased about with this plan is that Dr. Cagiano and Dr. Owens and Dr. Haynes all said, as we move forward and go start getting into the plan, we may have to tweak it. There may be something that will come up where we have to make little changes. And I like that because it's not like we're stuck to just one thing and just making sure that it goes regardless of the pieces that fall like Dr. Mason was saying. The other piece I wanted to say was I looked at the slide when it was talking about the band and core groups. And it talked about band members not using the same sticks and that for the core groups, they would use the mask expanders that was on there. I think that's a great idea, but it made me think about something. As we start moving into athletics, which we're doing now, I know that the mass extenders help extend a voice. And we have a lot of teachers who will probably be opting for some things like that as well. But what about, and this is just food for thought, Dr. Smith and your team and Dr. Cagiano, looking at expanding that, Dr. Haynes, since you're in charge of athletics, to maybe our coaches? Because as we, the mass expanders, now I don't know if they're going to be wearing the face shields so that they can be seen, but I know that they, their voice has to carry, especially when you're talking about on the field. So just as an idea, you might want to look at masks, those mass extenders for your coaches, Dr. Haynes.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, Beth May is already working on something like that at this moment. And we should be able to provide something to Dr. Smith, I would imagine, and report to you all shortly.
Great, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any comments from our student representative, Mr. Karnak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a multitude of questions regarding this presentation, just to reaffirm some areas that were covered. So number one on slides nine and 10, it focuses on the three metrics and specifically the ability of Hampton City Schools to implement, implement the five key mitigation strategies. And I'm asking this based on the general flow of the presentation. Is it correct to say that as far as the new CDC school reopening guidelines go, is it the working understanding of the CDC that it is the, those mitigation strategies that are the strongest correlate with reopening success?
Yes, I think that's a fair assumption and one of the things we shared this evening. And you'll see that there are multiple opportunities they've cited in the newly released document that provide action and really vetted research in reference to successful implementation of strategies. Not, not only leads to doors open and the opportunity to open more doors, but has an impact on communities as well. So yes, that's a fair assumption.
Okay, and then, let's see. Okay, so when this presentation was last delivered to the board on October 7th, one of my questions that I had in regards to the measures we would take daily and the, you know, student and parent opting into modified in-person. I had a specific question about whether students and parents would agree ahead of time in writing to random temperature checks. Number one, is it still the, the planned procedure of this division that we will do random temperature checks from time to time? And if so, will students and parents be signing on to that as part of that agreement that was referenced in tonight's presentation?
Nurse Gil?
In reference to that, we, the nurses will consistently, whenever a child comes into their clinic, take a temperature. So we're definitely going to be doing that each time a student comes into our, our clinic. However, the teachers do have the, have been told, they also can request if they feel a classroom needs a temperature check, we can go down to the classroom and do that as well. So that really is, is availability to the teacher, not just to have the nurse walking around periodically. It's more that the teacher as well can ask, request that.
Okay, and let's see, how will the modified in-person learning schedule accommodate spring break? And will there be a seven to 10 day quarantine period where virtual learning will be universal after spring break to control possible exposure?
And I, and I can respond to that. At this particular point in time, we've not received the guidance from the local health department indicating that that would be such a need. We did get guidance from the local health department with regards to the winter break. And so that was some guidance from the local health department. But at this particular point in time, we have not, that is not specific guidance that they, they have provided to suggest that we would do so.
Okay.
Oh, so, sorry, Paul.
Oh, that's, that's quite all right. I understand, you know, it's a rapidly evolving situation, so.
But as Ms. Cherry said, things change and we're, we will be flexible if, if needed.
That's fine. And it is still, you know, that's the first week of April. We have time to figure that out, certainly. And so another question here, so let's see, it was referenced in this presentation that students and families will complete the HCS Student Health Assessment Questionnaire daily and without exception. And let's say, you know, boarding buses and entering school buildings, what happens if those families don't fill out those questionnaires? What will be the recourse after that?
Yeah, good follow-up question. You know, when we first came out with the questionnaire, we also attached a verification to it through an electronic app. And what we were finding, a lot of our nurses spending quite a bit of time tracking out students who hadn't completed that and really taking them away from the clinic, for example, in, in some of the primary grades or pre-K and kindergarten. And so what we're asking there is that, that, that as a community, as Dr. Mason alluded to, I think Ms. Cherry as well, that as a community, we all do our part. And, and as a parent, I do my part to say, prior to getting ready for school, as we're getting ready for school, I'm looking over this, having a conversation. But it's, it's not to the point, the procedure is not that you have to bring this questionnaire in and turn it in to somebody. It's just keeping, you know, at my house, it's on the refrigerator, keeping that in front of us so that we continue to have those conversations. So you know, your head feels a little warm today, let's go ahead, I know the questionnaire. And so sometimes we're even hearing from parents where kids are initiating that conversation with, with their, their parents. So nothing you have to submit. It's just good practice when we look and recommendations certainly from as part of the CDC's overarching document as well.
And it is about establishing the culture of doing that. And the more we can establish that culture, and I think as Dr. Mason said, the importance of making certain that we all follow through. And so it really is about establishing that culture and mindset with all of our families. And, and with staff as well, because we, that, that is just as important.
Let's see. Okay, and specifically with the schedule changes, which, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Specifically with the schedule changes in regards to, you know, obviously we're operating on a modified schedule with virtual learning right now. It will be the plan to, to return to that traditional bell schedule upon modified in-person learning. Will there be a grace period to ensure that families who have to iron out the kinks in their transportation are not penalized for, you know, you know, forgetting that there is a certain school start time that's new? Will there be that lenience?
Oh, most certainly, yes. I know executive directors have already had those conversations with building principals, transportation, trying to get ahead of things. I know tomorrow, you know, they're looking forward to continuing phone calls. So for example, those boys and girls looking to come back on, on February 22nd, they've already begun kind of making phone calls, just adds up. You know, when we want to make sure you're comfortable, this is when we'd be coming, you know, same bus driver. And so yes, communication is of the utmost importance. And of course, continuing to show grace, all of our staff members have done an excellent job there.
All right, excellent. And then hey, and then my last question will be in reference to, let me pull up this slide. Slide 24 regarding the, that first CDC guidance metric, the universal incorrect use of masks. The, I appreciate the length at which, you know, the strength is described in which, you know, that, that detail is really there in regards to face shields, face masks, surplus supply. So with regard to perhaps future mitigation as it may arise with mask adherence, what are the steps that will be taken to ensure that there is, you know, optimal, optimal and maximum student and faculty compliance with mask wearing in modified in-person learning?
Well, I can share with you in conversations with our neighbors, they've been pleasantly surprised just how compliant even a pre-K child is with, with the mask. And so students have not been the issues. I think, I think our neighbors will tell you the hardest issue has been adults. For example, I want to go have lunch in the teacher's lounge and we're talking and all of a sudden, wait a second, our mask are within six feet. And so I think it's more of, of that case. So I know principals continuing to work and remind, but really, and that's why we, we put, we don't really foresee any potential weaknesses with current plans there. And, and again, just the, the constant reminders, and as Dr. Smith said, with the staff, it's already become a part of the culture. We saw when we opened our doors to pre-K and kindergarten students, how quickly that became a part of the culture there. So we anticipate the same level of success in the following grade levels.
And we've also outlined in the expectations, for example, you know, certainly a reminder from the classroom teacher and then the next step, support from the building administrator. And then always certainly if there's difficulty, conversation with the, the family member and the potential that a student may be placed in virtual if we don't have the, the compliance. And we also have the same on, as it relates to staff members, you know, the expectations and then what happens. And so certainly we've worked through some situations as it relates to staff members as well.
Yeah, that concludes my questions. Thank you and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karnak, I'd like to say thank you to the entire team of folks that presented tonight. Dr. Cagiano, Dr. Owens, Dr. Haynes, Ms. Ruth, Nurse Gil. Excellent, excellent presentation. What's really impressive is the return to school task force. If you look at that slide alone, just the quantity of people that are involved with this is really impressive. The presentation's impressive because it has the hyperlink. So people that want to dive deeper can do that. Really impressed with the slides that talk about strengths and potential weaknesses and then leading to mitigation plans to address those issues. So between Dr. Bowling doing the PPE in the facilities and Ms. Thomas addressing PE issues and Mr. D dressing band issues and Ms. Gole maintaining our dashboard. We, you know, it's, it's just very, very impressive what we're doing here. But I do circle back to what Dr. Smith said, which is one of the key words is flexibility. So, you know, as we go forward, we have shown that flexibility. And I think we will continue to do that, but just very, very. And I think we will continue to do that, but just very, very impressive presentation. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
Yes, Ms. Cherry, you have.
Sir, just one quick question. You mentioned PPE and it made me think of something. Just as a reminder, Dr. Caziano, what type of PPE will our bus drivers use?
Yes, and and one of our documents, one of our resources that we've put out for stakeholders, for example, is a video of of watching students ride a bus. And and on that video, you'll see when students board a bus, of course, bus drivers will be looking to see if the students have a mask on. If they don't, they'll have one to be able to share with them or to to give them. The second thing is they've all been offered face shields, so they have face shields. They've all been provided masks. We can't for fire hazard purposes, put the one gallon jugs of hand sanitizer like we do in our classrooms, but we have a smaller bottle up front. And then we also have student or really palm-sized bottles to distribute as needed as well. And so, you know, those are, those are the big mitigation strategies. There are, there are some some laws, of course, that keep us, for example, from putting Plexiglas up on every seat and whatnot. The other piece is we've staggered and the seats are marked. And so you can see that students aren't sitting right one behind each other unless they're siblings, for example, next to each other. And so our biggest buses, which typically hold around 77 to 80 students, the max capacity will be 23 students. And in dedication to Mr. Wills, as I'm talking, he's texting me and saying, he's saying, Dr. Caziano, don't forget wipes, gloves. I talked about the facial shields already and the microfiber rags as well. So kudos to Mr. Wills, a number of our example of our dedicated employees. Also say, Ms. Cherry, just while I had the mic open to piggyback on Miss Brink's grade, I received another text this evening while I was speaking from a curriculum leader, Dr. Bird Wright, who's home. And she's got two boys in our schools and she says, don't forget to tell Ms. Brink's grade that we've read over 6 million minutes per year this this year already with Literacy Pro and Mac and Via. So we have a lot of web-based platforms in reference to libraries that students are getting used to. So I hope all three of us have helped answer your questions.
Great, and you have. And I just wanted our community to be reminded of just the the wonderful pieces we put in place to protect our bus drivers. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Okay, Dr. Smith?
Okay, thank you so much. And to the team, thank you for great job. We'll move now to collective bargaining, and I think Ms. Ruth will certainly provide context for that. Ms. Ruth?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Smith. I'm going to share my screen. One second. All right, hopefully you all can see this. As Dr. Smith mentioned, I am going to spend a few minutes this evening providing you with an overview of collective bargaining. I'm going to review the legislative changes that are going to take place on May 1st. I am also going to provide you with two collective bargaining models and a recommendation for FY22. Tonight, you're going to hear a very high-level overview of the changes. For anyone who would like to read the entire section of code and really take a deeper look at all of the code changes, the link at the bottom of this slide will take you to the full text. So this legislation was originally scheduled to go into effect on July 1st, 2020. Due to the pandemic, Governor Northam delayed the effective date to May 1st, 2021. The new legislation is very broad, and while it allows public employers to participate in collective bargaining, it does not mandate collective bargaining. The code states that school boards may choose to take no action, or alternatively, they may choose to pass a resolution indicating an intention to participate in collective bargaining. The code also allows unions to request certification to represent an employee group. It is important to note that should a school board decide to participate in collective bargaining, any agreements are still subject to appropriations. All right, so now let's go ahead and take a deeper dive and to the options that are available under the code. As I shared, the code outlines basically two options. Option A is to take no action, or option B to pass a resolution. The board may decide to take no action, that is, unless the board receives a certification from a majority of employees in a unit. In that case, you have 120 days to take action, although that action can still be to do nothing at all. So what does it mean to receive a certification? The code does not define certification. The board might receive a letter from a labor union or a petition from a group of employees. The important criteria is that a majority of the employees within an employee group or bargaining unit agree that they want to be represented by a particular union. A bargaining unit is a group of employees who have similar jobs, duties, and are responsibilities. Employees on the teacher scale would be an example of one bargaining unit. Bus drivers and attendants might be another unit. Auto mechanics from transportation and tradesmen from school operations and maintenance might also be considered a unit. It's also important to note that only one union may represent a single bargaining unit. If the certification request is received, the first step is to determine if the certification meets the requirements set forth in code. For instance, there are approximately 1,500 employees on the teacher scale. If we receive a petition with only 300 signatures, the request would not be sufficient, and the board would not need to take any action. However, if there are 800 signatures on the petition and all 800 of the employees who signed the petition belong to the same union, the board may have, the board would have 120 days to determine whether or not to adopt a resolution to participate in collective bargaining. The board can also decide that they're not prepared to participate in collective bargaining. All right, the earliest that a labor union can submit a valid certification would be May 1st of this year. That is the effective date of the law. And if the school board were to receive a certification request on May 1st, that means you would have to take a vote no later than August 29th, 2021. This slide shows the current percentage of employees that are members of an employee association as of January 2021. Currently, 27% of the employees on the teacher scale belong to either the Hampton Education Association or HEA or the Hampton Federation of Teachers, HFT. And there's approximately a 50-50 split in the membership. Of all the other employees who are eligible to participate in collective bargaining, only 7% are a member of either HEA or HFT. There are groups of employees who are not eligible to participate in collective bargaining. Examples include supervisors, assistant principals, and principals. As you can see from this chart, neither employee association has a majority membership for any employee group. Option B is for the board to pass a resolution indicating the intent to participate in collective bargaining. As I shared earlier, the code is very broad and provides almost a blank slate for determining what collective bargaining might look like in Hampton. The only guidance provided is that when defining what the procedures for certification and decertification are, the definition must include the timeframe for reasonable public notice and a process for one labor organization to intervene and replace an existing labor organization. If the board does choose to pass a resolution, there are several things that will need to be defined. What employee groups will be included within each bargaining unit? For example, would the teacher's bargaining unit include only positions on the teacher scale? Or might it include other support positions that require a board of education license, such as school social workers and school psychologists? The board might also, will also need to identify what matters may be included in the bargaining process. For example, wages, work hours, benefits, working conditions. Finally, the board will need to identify what form of collective bargaining they will utilize, meet and confer or traditional collective bargaining. I'm going to spend the next few minutes providing you with an overview of the two collective bargaining models I just mentioned. The first is meet and confer. Meet and confer is less formal than traditional collective bargaining and brings representatives from senior leadership and the union to discuss and resolve workplace concerns. Typically, members of the union will be part of staff committees, for instance, the policy committee. And we currently have members of both HEA and HFT on the Return to School Task Force. Meet and confer does not generally result in a formal collective bargaining agreement. However, it is not unusual to create a memorandum of understanding. There we go. Sorry, I was one behind. Traditional collective bargaining is much more formal and results in a legally binding collective bargaining agreement, or CBA. CBAs govern the terms of employment and may override existing HCS policies. Again, the board would identify in the resolution what items are eligible for negotiation. Traditional CBAs also typically include grievance procedures. This may be somewhat limited based on the fact that Virginia Code currently outlines a very specific grievance process and what items are grievable. One important item to note is that most states who allow collective bargaining for public employees also have a state-level agency that serves in an arbitrator or mediator capacity. Virginia has not established such an agency, so this may be an area that requires particular attention if the board chooses to participate in collective bargaining. Two of the more prevalent forms of collective bargaining are positional-based positional bargaining and interest-based bargaining. Positional bargaining is probably what most often comes to mind when you think of traditional collective bargaining. It creates an us versus them mentality and will often result in win-lose or even lose-lose resolutions to concerns. Interest-based bargaining tends to be more collaborative and is focused on working together to identify solutions. I know this has been a high-level overview of collective bargaining, and I do hope the information has provided you with greater insight into the options and obligations facing the board. I think it's also important to note that it has been more than 40 years since collective bargaining has been a possibility for public employees, which means that this is, that there is a significant learning curve. And it is that learning curve that drives our recommendation for the next school year. As I shared earlier, code outlines two options, that the board take no action or that you pass a resolution to enter into the collective bargaining process. Our recommendation actually presents a third option. And that is to use FY22 as a planning year. If the board approves our recommendation, we will spend FY22 researching best practices, participating in professional development, working with leadership from HEA and HFT, and also consulting with subject matter experts and other school divisions that already have collective bargaining as a part of their normal process. Cost is an important consideration because we are in the process of developing the FY22 budget. And the fiscal impact, we estimate, will be approximately $75,000 for a planning year. And with that, I would like to turn it back to the school board for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Do I have any questions from board members? No questions. All right. Any questions from our student representative?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Excellent presentation, Ms. Ruth. I appreciate all the information. Do you need any kind of consensus from the board or without objection, I think we're taking that recommendation and building the recommendation into the recommended FY22 budget, if that, am I correct? Okay.
Yes, sir. Point of order. As long as we know that's the consensus that we're going to go go with the planning year, that would be all that we need. You don't need a vote.
Right, right. So I'm I'm hearing no objection, so I'm taking that as consensus. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Ruth. Dr. Smith, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ruth. The final report this evening, it is that of looking at how we might manage inclement weather. There are a lot of things that we've learned through this virtual environment. And so we'd really like to share with the board an approach as it relates to inclement weather and how we might manage those days when we have a hybrid in-person learning taking place. And so I'm going to ask if Ms. Gourl will provide just a quick overview of that process in terms of decision-making process so that certainly the board is familiar, but also for the general public in terms of the process that we would use going forward, especially given lessons learned, but also creating that avenue whereby we can operate in a very different way on the virtual side if we have inclement weather and what that might look like. And so, Ms. Gourl?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Welcome, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore and and board members. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you. So Dr. Smith kind of stole my intro as I was going to explain to everyone, remind everyone that we are operating in a different world, but we have advantages to that than lessons learned of how we can now transition to teaching and learning, even in those inclement weather days. With our switch to virtual learning last March and in our planning, we are now one-to-one school board for pre-K through 12th grade, so that obviously opens up different opportunities. So the first document I'm sharing with you, and this is onboard docs for the public to view, this would be when we are operating in 100% virtual learning model. So like right now, we are 100% virtual and will remain 100% virtual tomorrow and Friday and are bringing back our pre-K in kindergarten and self-contained students on Monday. So this would really work for the next two days if we have inclement weather. But basically, this document is just saying that in the event that we had snow or other inclement weather and we're already operating in a 100% virtual learning model, all of our classes will just proceed as they would regularly on their regular virtual schedule. And students would be expected to zoom with their teachers and attendance would be taken. In regards to employees, which is not on here, but we've communicated that with staff, is that if we had to physically shut down school buildings and offices due to maybe some dangerous road conditions, that we have the opportunity for the majority of our employees to keep telecommuting and work from home. So this is just kind of how we would operate in that situation. We did on the right-hand side talk about power and internet outages. This is not widespread power or internet outages. This would be maybe for, you know, in some small sections of our community and what students or teachers would need to do if they were experiencing a community. I'm sorry, a power outage. But again, this is just a process we could use if it was a a storm like they're seeing in Texas right now. You know, we would obviously take that into consideration because by no means are we expecting to have virtual learning going on if there's catastrophic weather or widespread powder power outages. The second document, which is really what would take effect on Monday, the 22nd, once we bring back our pre-K and K students and self-contained students, is this modified in-person learning model. So if we were to have any inclement weather from Monday forward, what we would do is transition everyone to virtual learning and with the expectation of students having their Chromebooks at home as well as teachers. Students would be expected to to have a Zoom with their teachers and attendance would be taken, but we would modify the schedule be at 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM for all students. And we even provided just how that would look for our middle and high school schedules for their four blocks that day. And then the right-hand side is exactly the same. Both documents talk about our meal sites if we had to close them abruptly, as well as just how we give those weather announcements. And it's the same that we always have as far as, you know, emails, website, our parent square notifications, social media postings, as well as on Channel 46 or Fios Channel 20. And that is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gourl. Any questions from board members? Any questions from our student representative?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a two quick questions or a quick question and a comment about the the in-person or well, both posters, the comment is about that. I appreciate the fact that we are giving dedicated space to explain what will happen with meal sites. And that that really shows how much we're invested in making sure that all of our students' needs are met. inside and outside of the classroom. So I want to thank you for that. And then regarding the in-person poster with that abbreviated schedule, in the event where the division would decide on a two-hour delay, would that abbreviated schedule be used and pushed back two hours? Or would a two-hour delay be eliminated and we would just move to a virtual abbreviated day? How would that work?
In all honesty, this is more of what the schedule would look like instead of doing a two-hour delay. It would be a modified schedule from nine to twelve because you would already be at home and be virtual. Of course, like I said, if there's catastrophic weather and we just had to close completely or adjust, we would use our means of announcing that to our families.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Karnick. Excellent presentation, Ms. Goral. Thank you again. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. No further remarks from me and no additional reports from staff members and from superintendent.
Alright, thank you. We now move to section five of our meeting, which is hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. My understanding is we have not received any this evening. Correct, Ms. Bowers? Okay, then we will move on to section six of our meeting, which is informational items. And I'll turn the first one over to you, Dr. Smith. Item six point zero one, Academies of Hampton update.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you know, and we're all aware that we've had a lot of great work occurring in Hampton City Schools around the Academies of Hampton and that this particular graduating class will be the absolute, the absolute first class of the full one hundred percent wall-to-wall experience. And so, so much to be said about that great partnership with our city and the community at large. And we appreciate the direction provided and support from, from the school board and certainly from our building principals and classroom teachers and support staff. And, and to say that our young people really, they have given one hundred and fifty percent given this current environment that we're in, along with our teachers and the, and the support. So I'm going to ask at this time, if I could just have a brief moment, that Dr. Haynes, and I know we have Ms. Heard, who serves as the director of the Academies of Hampton, just make a comment relative to the report there. You probably have had an opportunity to see that in that report, you can click on it. I can see Dr. Haynes is so excited that I'm calling on him to, to make some remarks. But you'll see that there's a quiz for board members. We hope that you'll have some fun and our broader community in taking that, that quiz relative to the Academies of Hampton and to see just how much you know relating to the work associated with the Academies of Hampton. So, Dr. Haynes, you want to highlight a couple of things for me, please?
Thank you, Doc Smith. I'm laughing because just about everything you just mentioned, I was asking Mrs. Heard to discuss in her brief presentation to the board.
Just say it one more time. She'll say, both of you guys will say it better.
We are very excited about this being the first graduating class with the wall-to-wall academies. And we, we recognize that this work continues in spite of the pandemic. We've had to be creative and do some things, but making certain we still made these experiences as memorable and as practical for our young people as possible. We have the commitment to graduate coming up on March ninth and March tenth. We are still dedicated to making certain we, we ensure the class of two thousand and twenty-one feel the specialness of being the inaugural class of our wall-to-wall academies. I know Mr. Samuels probably has a personal vested interest in this as well, but collectively, we are all excited about what's to come for this class and the work that continues as we continue to transform our high schools. Outstanding work that continues on a regular basis with our executive principals, academy principals, and the faculty and staff at the four high schools in addition to all of the folks who are working together to ensure we solidify what it means to be one Division One transformation. Be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the work that Ms. Heard continues to do as the director of academies. And like Doc Smith mentioned, I know you all have briefed yourself on the report, but sort of kind of want to highlight some things at this time, and I will turn it over to Ms. Heard.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity, Chairperson Kilgore and school board members. I just quickly want to go through the memo, and then I will share your quiz results. No, I think we'll say that later. So quick, basically, what we wanted to provide you in the memo, as you know, we are still on this journey to prepare all our students for success in careers, lifelong learning, and life. And we're definitely making sure that we put the necessary structures in place to make that happen. The school board memo basically has been broken down into three sections, which are our transformation strands, which consists of teaching and learning, the secondary school experience, and business and civic engagement. And so as you go through it, you'll see what that overarching strand means. And then we have provided you with an example of what that looks like within the transformational lens. So for instance, when you go to transform and teach and learn, we have provided you with some information on our extended learning opportunities for our young people, which extends the experiential learning not only from the classroom to outside of the classroom and now in the digital space as well. So in addition to that, we also have strand two, which is transforming the secondary school experience. And so here, where you really are taking the time to highlight the different professional development opportunities that we are extending to our teachers, counselors, and administrators. And you'll see these are not one and done. They are been come, we have instituted series that monthly are building leaders and others are coming together to not only develop their skillset, but then to be able to implement it and then have that monitored in a very methodical way. And then finally, you know, the backbone to this model is transforming business and civic engagement. So we have provided you with an in-depth overview on how we are not only just building the platform of our business partners, but how we're trying to prevent or create engaged business partners to really help us move the work-based learning continuum for all our young people within this model. So we provided you with some additional information in regards to that. And of course, as you continue to go through the document, you will see that we've provided you with little tidbits of information. What we are referring to is, please pass this information along. And this just helps us to celebrate the great work that we are doing as a division and community to really help transform what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools. And of course, our ultimate goal is to not only transform our school division, but to uphold our promise to our young people to make sure that we maintain fun, engaging, real-world experiences for them inside and outside of the classroom, to build their confidence and to prepare them for the future. One thing quickly that I do want to highlight, if you go and when you look at the memo and you'll see at the bottom, we do have the quiz to test your academies one-on-one, so please make sure you do that. But we also want to highlight something that we don't really extend to the community, but Charles Bowser is the founder of the academy model. And in there, we provided you with an information in regards to why he found this, found this model and why he felt important to integrate this. And this is during the civil rights movement in the nineteen sixties. So basically, he basically, what his overall goal was that he saw young people in the community needed not only to learn, but they needed to develop a skillset. And so from that emerged the academy model. And the one tidbit, I won't give it all away, but one thing he shares in there, he describes these small learning communities so we can really focus in on the students. And he also says that he calls them academies. And the reason why he calls them academies is because the students that come to these academies, he wanted them to feel special. And so that's what we're doing here. We're creating small learning communities, bringing together our teachers, our students, and communities, not only to prepare our students for the world that awaits them, but for them to understand how special they are in this model. So that's my three minutes. I've never had that long to present to you all before, so I hope it's enough. But again, we do have the memo. We look forward to your quiz. If you need anything, please do not hesitate to reach out. Thank you, Dr. Haynes.
Well, okay, if you all need to call a friend on some of those quiz questions as well. Thank you, Ms. Heard. Doc Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Haynes, and thank you, Ms. Heard. Mr. Chairman, that concludes information from the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And again, thank you, Dr. Haynes and Ms. Heard. It was an excellent memo. Lots of really good stuff in that. I'm just going to take a quick pause and, and ask if any board members want to say anything or ask you any quick questions, call a friend type thing. Alright, again, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing more about that in our upcoming meetings as well. Quick announcement, our next meeting will be March third at Jones Magnet Middle School at six thirty PM, where we will be getting a presentation of our FY twenty-two budget. And then on March tenth and March seventeenth, again, at Jones Magnet Middle School, we'll be holding public hearings on our budget. So look forward to actually seeing folks in person. Again, with the caveat that if, if numbers change due to the pandemic, we may have to be flexible, but as it stands right now, that will be our first meeting in person for quite some time. So, and then finally, I'll open it to the floor for informational items from board members. Any informational items? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Chairman Kilgore. I just want to share with the board members, with other board members, and also the staff that I had the privilege of having lunch on Monday, which was a holiday with Chris Bowman, who serves as my buddy on city council. And as you know, Chris has only been in that position for seven months. So it was an opportunity, opportunity for he and I just to have a conversation about Hampton City School. What is our budget process like? What are some of our priorities and so forth? So, so what I'm, the, the, the purpose also is to encourage other board members to reach out to their city council members and, you know, solicit their support, especially as we are fast approaching this budget season. And so I just want to encourage board members and just to keep the community and get involved that we do have that one-to-one partnership and opportunity where we communicate and collaborate with our city council members.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Any other board members with informational items? And I will ask if our student representative, Mr. Karnick, has any informational items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No informational items at this time.
Alright, thank you. Okay, I did want to say again, thank you to Ms. Bowers. We appreciate you all year long, but we want to recognize you this evening since it's School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And I also wanted to extend, to let you know that even though Dr. Woodhouse couldn't be here with us this evening, he absolutely wanted to extend his appreciation to you as well. And I wanted to thank Ms. Goral for helping put together that proclamation that we gave you. Her team really did a nice job on that, and so I wanted to thank her as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore, but now I'm in trouble with Ms. Bowers.
Yeah, we, it's hard to, it's hard to surprise Ms. Bowers with anything, so we did our best. Anyway, okay, and with that, that concludes our meeting this, tonight. So this meeting is adjourned. Hope everybody has a wonderful evening, and please stay safe.